Good afternoon, I'd like to call the city council meeting June 30th, 2015. To order, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for religious stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Francisco Hart, Hotchkiss, Mario.
Here.
Rouse, White, Mayor Schneider.
Here. Any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we'd like to request that Item 20 on the consent calendar be polled and we'll bring it back at a later date. This is the memorandum of understanding with the Community Action Commission for the South Coast Task Force on Youth Gangs. It requires kind of multi-party agreement and we're not quite fully buttoned up there and so we want to get it in order before we bring it back.
Okay, is there a motion to bring Item 20 to a future council date?
There is, Madam Mayor.
Moved in second, it, all in favor? Aye. All right, so we move on to public comment and we have a number of public speaker slips here. We have two minutes at the podium. We'll start with Richard Robinson to be followed by Scott Spalding. Mr. Robinson?
Honorable Mayor Schneider, members of council, Richard Robinson, it takes a village. Because of Santa Barbara's uniqueness, Hillary Clinton's presidency can unite this community. Ma'am, when Bush stole the presidency in 99 by stealing votes from brilliant, his 60,000 votes were ripped off from the voters in northern part of Florida. Jacksonville, Florida, Duval County, very clever lawyers. Jeb Bush, governor, appoints an elections commissioner, this dodges this jive fake chat room about Chad's for weeks and weeks, and we know that Al Gore was president. I'm convinced, we elect her, we got a country again. Now, I'm going to say this in all honesty, I'm a Republican. I'm a Goldwater Republican. I voted for the Jewish Native American guy in '64, you know what I mean? But my party, the party of Abraham Lincoln, the GOP, has kind of wandered into Never-Neverland. It's ridiculous. But, she's 60 points ahead of the menagerie that's trying to catch up. She's going to have the best advisor any president could ever have, right there in the White House with her. This country's going to be on course again. I just thought I'd put in a plug for her here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Spalding will be followed by Phil Walker.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm Scott Spalding with the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments and just wanted to use this opportunity today to talk about a new transit service that we're going to be launching on July 11th. SB CAG funds and oversees the Clean Air Express service and for the first time, we're going to be operating a trip on Saturdays between the San Ynez Valley, Bilton, Solvang, and Los Lejos, and Santa Barbara. And we work closely with city staff. I want to recognize Peter Brown for helping us plan this service and it's something that we're really excited about, think it's going to be very successful. I brought some schedules to distribute for you today. July 11, the first day is going to be free, so I encourage you to help us spread the word. We have a very low marketing budget, so at the events and any kind of engagements you might be, the service is going to be bringing people to downtown Santa Barbara from the valley, go to the beach, go shopping, go to movies and that kind of thing. And it's going to be bidirectional, it's going to help both sides, but just help us spread the word, we're excited about it. It's going to be a pilot program for a year, we're going to evaluate it, but we're looking forward to it. Be happy to answer any questions anyone has.
Great, thank you. Phil Walker will be followed by Suzanne Peck.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. State of California Insurance Commissioner Jones was on the radio the other night. He was sort of decrying the fact that only 12% of the residences in this state are covered by, I think, I wasn't certain whether he said the California Fair Plan, earthquake insurance, or private insurance too, but he was very specific about 12%. And he said, you know, like, he probably has much closer relationship with the USGS than I would have, but he said, in our lifetime, or even much less, they expect two very large earthquakes, not just one. Could be the Newport-Inglewood Fault in LA, the Hayward Fault in the Bay Area, and/or the San Andreas. Okay, that point given, I brought up the fact of the balcony collapse in Berkeley a couple of weeks ago, a very tragic and sad thing. Now, they're looking at that at the state building department level and code is always as good as what really works. One other quick thing, 813 Garden Street, the Ken Porter auction property there, I don't know if everybody's seen it, right adjacent essentially to the Upton Jeff Shelton project that's beautiful. One house removed, they rehabbed, put a lot of effort into the house, right adjacent to the north, then right adjacent to the south, there's an office building. Two months ago, a lady came, I happened to stop and look at it, a lady came out that worked in that office building, she was very, very upset. It is now a essentially hazmat cleanup area, but the whole place is like it's being self-demoted in place and there's a lot of upset people and there's been a lot of investment on both sides of that property and, you know, it's scary looking. Thank you very much.
Suzanne Peck will be followed by Tom Woodrow, who will be the final speaker.
Good afternoon, Mayor Schneider and members of the council. I'm excited to be here today, not just in my role as commission for women for the Santa Barbara County, but also, my husband Abe and I are both on the board and we're founding parents of P-Flag Santa Barbara. And we're very, very excited to be having Santa Barbara's first-ever interfaith pride celebration. And a couple of things, we want to encourage all of you to attend. This is going to be on July 12, 2:00 PM, in the sunken gardens, courthouse sunken gardens. We have ministers from 19 different faith communities and still counting, three rabbis, 25 tables from congregations who would like to show their support to the LGBTQ community, as well as a 50-person interfaith choir. So it's going to be wonderful and we really hope you'll come out and mingle with, we expect about 600 people that afternoon. We hope you'll be there and show your support for LGBTQ community, but also, we hope that you'll pay attention going forward to the issues in our community that have not been dealt with yet. So we're thrilled about marriage equality and we'll be celebrating the Supreme Court decision, but we know we also have a road to travel in terms of employment and housing discrimination. So we're looking forward to your support and you're paying attention to those issues going forward. Any questions about the event?
No, thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
Tom Woodrow.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. Just been a few big decisions in front of you the last few weeks and just thought on behalf of City Watch, I just offer comment, not a scorecard. Just want to say, well done on Franceschi House and the decision last week. Just the tone from the council was one that actually, I think wisely opted not to fob it off for another 50 years for another council to make this decision and that actually takes some guts to do that when the city was acquired this some odd, this burden, financial burden 50 years ago. And folks at City Watch were pleased, albeit respectful of the historical value of the property, et cetera, but the fact that you're willing to kind of look at it and possibly move forward with what needs to be done unless they can find private funding. Secondly, on the vacation rental ban, I still didn't quite understand how it doesn't fit in with the character of Santa Barbara. I just would urge the council, if you ever look at this again, to find out if there are truly incidents that degrade neighborhoods in the way that recreational vehicles did and that you took good regulatory action, I think, on RVs. I think folks who live up by City College would love to have short-term vacation rentals there necessarily than the current kind of stash of 10 students to a room. So, anyway, I'd love to get another chance to revisit vacation rentals and I wasn't quite sure why there was a unanimous vote against it. I hadn't heard an outcry as to it kind of degrading the neighborhoods, so. And finally, regarding the road sales tax issue that you've thought about putting on the ballot for the fall, and once again, I urge you to come to some agreement as the roads continue to deteriorate, it costs money and so, as they get worse. So, City Watch is not categorically necessarily opposed to tax increase, but it'd be nice if it could come up with something that was a concrete plan and that involved a two-thirds vote and a specific list of agenda items, as Councilmember Hart has referred to before. But I appreciate the mayor's focus on it and the rest of you on the condition of our roads and infrastructure.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, that concludes public comment. Onto the consent calendar, there's some items to read.
Item two, adoption of ordinance approving supervisor's memorandum of understanding and salary plans for unrepresented management, safety and non-safety, and city administrator recommending that council adopt by reading of title only. A, an ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara amending the 2012 to 2015 memorandum of understanding between the city of Santa Barbara and the Santa Barbara City Supervisory Employees Bargaining Unit, adopted by ordinance number 5587 and previously amended by ordinance number 5623 and extending the term through June 30, 2016. B, an ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara setting forth and approving a salary plan for unrepresented managers and professional attorneys for fiscal year 2016 and fiscal year 2017. And C, an ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara setting forth and approving a salary plan for the city administrator for fiscal year 2016 and fiscal year 2017. Item three, introduction of ordinance establishing speed limits on certain portions of Loma Alta Drive, recommending that council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only. An ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara amending Chapter 1060 of the municipal code by amending Section 1060015, establishing prima facie speed limits on certain portions of Loma Alta Drive. Item four, adoption of resolution relating to the general municipal election of November 3, 2015, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara calling for the holding of a vote by mail general municipal election to be held in the city on Tuesday, November 3, 2015, for the election of certain officers as required by the provisions of the charter and that certain settlement agreement dated March 10, 2015, in Benales et al. versus the city of Santa Barbara. Item five, salary and benefit continuation for city employees on active military duty leave of absence, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara authorizing the continuance of employee salary and benefits during a military leave of absence effective May 18, 2015. And item 21, adoption of ordinance regarding Bilton Library property lease, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara authorizing the library director to execute a lease agreement between the city of Santa Barbara and the city of Bilton for the Bilton Library property.
Thank you, without further objection, we'll wait for the reading. I do have a speaker slip for item four and I know item 12, we want to take off any other items. Any other items?
I have a question for item 22, Madam Mayor. I don't need to vote on separately, but just questions.
Any other items? Okay, if we could read item, just the title of item four.
Adoption of resolution relating to the general municipal election of November 3, 2015.
Thank you, Mr. Burke, come on up.
Madam Mayor members, I want, I request, the drop-off points for the Saturday before the election be the same as the Friday before election. If I have a religion, democracy is it. The vote is the holy grail of democracy. I am the boss, you are the servants. I am one of we, the people. Elections are our opportunity to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty. I want all the people to vote all the time in every election. I do not want the hired hands telling the citizen sovereigns when and where they cannot vote. Saying not enough votes justify the expense extended is like saying we have to shorten the hoses on the fire trucks because the longer hoses do not justify the expense. The angel is in the details. The crosstown trolley does not run on Saturday or Sunday, its absence just makes it harder to vote. The first interest advanced is that of the state in sustaining the active role of the individual citizen in the electoral process. I vote to open all the election drop-off points on the Saturday before election. Thank you.
Okay, any other, any comments on item four? Okay, we have.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, may I ask the city clerk about Mr. Burke's suggestion? So right now, Ms. Pierce, it's only the Saturday, it's only City Hall that's open on Saturday, is that correct?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mario, yes, City Hall location will be open on the Saturday prior to Election Day. After the 2011 election, staff had come to the conclusion that due to overtime, hours and staffing, the polling locations, it wasn't, and getting such a low amount of ballots on that day, which was about 200 ballots that we received that day, that it wasn't cost-effective to have all the locations open on that Saturday before the election. So, in 2013, we had come to the compromise to do City Hall location and so that's what we are continuing this year. So, it was a, like I said, it was a cost savings measure.
Thank you. Okay, if you can read item number 12. Thank you, Ms. Pierce.
Donation from the Santa Barbara Police Foundation for the Department Explorer Program.
Thank you, Sergeant McGrew.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name's Mike McGrew and I work at the police department, as you can see, but I'm also on the board for the Santa Barbara Police Foundation and it's been created years ago by Chief Sanchez, just to help our department obtain equipment that's unbudgeted and more importantly, it helps several of our officers, employees during catastrophic times. So, we've, over the years, been able to assist the department in several hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment that keeps us safe and the community safe and help several of our employees as well during tough times. But I'm here today to present a check to the city of Santa Barbara for the Santa Barbara Police Department Explorer Post and this is an important program in our community. It has young men and women aging from 14 to 20 years old and what the program does is just, it teaches these people about leadership and prepares them to be police officers if they choose to be in the future, but it's a great program. And recently, we've just had six of our explorers graduate from the Central Coast Explorer Academy and we have two more that are going to the National Explorer Academy. So it's a high-end program. Sergeant Riley Harwood is one of our supervisors in charge of that and they've just done so many great things for so many important kids and we just really value this program. So, we're giving this check, it's $2,500 and it's going to equip 10 new explorers who are entering the program, so we just thank you for.
Great. Before I pick up the check, we have a motion to accept it. Item 12.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor? Aye. Great. They were, I think, volunteering, some of them, at the gun buyback a couple of weeks ago, too.
Yes, yeah, they're very busy in the community, a lot of volunteers.
How many people does it take to deposit a check? Okay, that's all good, thank you. All right, and then, Mr. White, you had a question on item 22, is that right?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Can you read item 22?
Increase grant revenues and appropriations for the Annapamoo, Cabrillo, De La Guerra, Quinientos, and Gutierrez street bridge replacement projects.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question is this, is the two bridges, the Annapamoo, which I have to be frank, I will need to go out and see where that is, I can't picture it in my mind's eye, and the Quinientos street bridges have no matching fund requirement and I don't understand why. So, could you explain that a little bit, please?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, Brian Demore, Principal, Civil Engineer, Public Works Department. That is correct. There are some bridges that, based on the road classification that they are on, they're eligible for 100% grant funding through Caltrans. So Annapamoo and Quinientos both are in that category.
What's the flavor that makes them eligible?
I think it's officially considered off-highway system, I think is the official term, but it's the lesser traveled roads that are still part of the federal system.
Lesser traveled roads that are part of the federal system?
Yeah, essentially, so.
Alternate route when?
Chapalayananali was similarly 100% funded and I believe Mason Street as well. It's a good deal.
Yeah, it is, even better. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept the, approve the balance of the consent calendar?
Move balance, second.
Moved in second, it, all in favor? Aye. Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. Report from the ordinance committee, Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had a complex discussion and presentation regarding news racks today and there were enough questions raised that we decided to return it for further examination to the city attorney in consultation with staff and some of the principal publishers here and expect to see it back in two to three weeks.
Okay, thank you. Item 26.
Status report and contract services for the Cabrillo Pavilion and Bathhouse renovation project.
Okay, Ms. Zachary.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Jill Zachary, Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation. With today's presentation, we would like to give council, successor agency, a status report on the renovation project. Like to start the report with a visual of what we anticipate the renovated pavilion will look like from the beach side, essentially the same, but a whole lot better, be able to better serve the community through its recreation programs, beach access, and special event functions. Would like to briefly review our scope, provide a status report. We'll also be asking that you authorize entering into the lead commissioning agent contract right that stage of the project, briefly review our next steps, project funding, where we are to date, and then the schedule for moving the project forward. Just as a reminder, the pavilion was dedicated to the city for park and recreation purposes in 1927 and given to the city by David Gray. Key objective of our work to renovate it is to maintain the historic integrity of the building, yet at the same time, address the building systems, our structural, seismic, access, other systems issues, after almost 90 years, really need a major facelift. We also have some significant interior renovation objectives, particularly for the bathhouse floor, where we have recreation programming areas that are significantly underutilized today. We face a number of site safety and security issues today. Through the renovation, we hope that we will address those, both in terms of lighting, design, but also enhance programming and enhance community use. With the renovation of the facility, it's our goal to achieve lead silver. So, since we were at council back in November of 2014, we've completed essentially all of the technical studies we needed to do in order to submit our application for a coastal development permit. We did that at the beginning of March, it was deemed complete at the beginning of June, and here we are today with today's presentation. We also updated the Parks and Recreation Commission last week. We're planning to have a second community open house on August 4th. Purpose of that is to provide stakeholders with an update, but also to begin talking about how the facility will be programmed, once it's renovated and open to the public again. We anticipate will be before the planning commission on August 20th. And we're also taking the project to the Access Advisory Committee. One of our key objectives with this project is to bring the site, both interior and exterior, up to today's ADA standards. It'll give us an opportunity to show how we're achieving that through the renovation design. Wanted to just briefly talk about coastal hazards and sea level rise, in part because that's becoming an increasing concern for coastal communities in general and Santa Barbara specifically. It's being addressed at the policy level through our local coastal plan update and then also through our climate action plan, but on a project and site-specific basis, we need to address the potential vulnerability of the site today in 2030, 2065, and 2100, both from sea level rise, but the frequency of coastal storm events, and come up with a proposed approach for how we intend to adapt the site over time. We believe we have an approach that's consistent with the guidelines from the Coastal Commission. First and foremost, we'll be flood-proofing the entire perimeter of the building as part of the project. We're also initiating a beach profile monitoring study this summer, which anticipate will continue for decades to come, where we'll be able to determine how the beach width might change over time to give us that trigger point where sea level might be rising. We currently benefit from beach nourishment due to the harbor dredge program, that will continue to be important for this site and Santa Barbara, and then also, we'll be looking at ways to enhance that in the future. Similarly, at some point, perhaps in 2065, we'll need to implement some additional soft solutions, like building a winter berm in front of the facility in order to protect it from coastal storms. Essentially, coastal storms are what we need to be most concerned about. And then lastly, I'd just like to point out that the city, back in the 1930s, spent a lot of time protecting its shoreline, a lot of the protection is still present, it's just buried under sand. We believe it's still functioning to protect our coastline. The Cabrillo Pavilion is one of those locations, and you can see in this top photograph, where that shoreline protection was installed and that gives you a sense of where East Boulevard once was and obviously the new Cabrillo Boulevard above. At some point in the future, we may need to determine the role that that would play in protecting the facility. That's yet to be determined, all of this is done on today's science and today's models, so staff throughout the city are closely monitoring how to proceed. Which brings us to our recommendation today. We are at the point in the project where it's time to bring onboard a commissioning agent, act as a third-party verification for our lead objectives. This agent would be on contract through the entire project, so through the remaining of the design project, through construction, and then also testing the facility systems to make sure we're meeting the standards and being able to verify that. We're recommending that the city contract with FGI Farnsworth Group, they've got experience working with local agencies, city agencies, the state, UCLA, and also locally have worked with Westmont in their lead endeavors. and also locally have worked with Westmont in their lead endeavors. So next steps, we anticipate that we'll be able to move forward with final design and developing construction documents. Other key next steps, now that we're close to the coastal development permit, is extending our community outreach efforts, initiating the project fundraising efforts, and then rekindling the business plan development, which we started in 2011. Right now, we estimate the total project cost is about $12 million. We have 9.1 in the former RDA bond proceeds, which are using in part for the design work. With the council approval of the fiscal year 2016 general fund capital budget, we have an additional $500,000. We have in the proposed capital program long range an additional million for next year, and that would leave us with about 1.5 for fundraising, something that we'll be—begin looking at in earnest in the next month. So just to the schedule, we anticipate getting our coastal development approval in August or September. That's our goal through the Planning Commission. We would be back before you in October with recommendations for final design. We anticipate that process, getting through the final design process and construction documents, is about six months. We'll also be proposing our marketing fundraising plan, our business plan approach, and then also the approach to a restaurant tenant concession. We're at that point in the project, as we go into final design, that we would be recommending that the city begin evaluating and addressing the future restaurant concession for the facility. Phase three, construction, what we all want, will really depend on where we are with fundraising and how much money we have in hand to move the project forward. That concludes staff presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any speaker slips on this? No? Any questions?
Is the fundraising component, you think, a partnership with the Park Foundation? What's the mechanism here?
Mayor Schneider and members of the city council, yes. We believe we'll be able to work with the Park Foundation. Clearly, as a nonprofit foundation, that's an opportunity for the city to leverage its efforts. We also anticipate that we'll be looking for larger grants from state agencies, perhaps, foundations, towards construction. We're in that place in a project where we've been successful before. If we can get through the permitting, and the city clearly has a sizable match and a clear intent to move this project forward, that we think that will be the best avenue to raise funds.
Great. Okay. Great. Well, if there aren't any other questions, we do need—there is a—we do need a motion to execute the contract, so item B.
Oh, moved.
Second.
Moved in second. It all in favor? Aye. Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Good luck. Keep moving. Item number 27.
Loan to Grace Village Apartments LP for a new affordable housing project at 3869 State Street, Grace Village Apartments.
Mr. Rowell, whenever you're ready. Go right ahead.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'm David Rowell, the Housing Project Planner for the City of Santa Barbara. This is a request that council approve a $1 million loan to Grace Village Apartments Limited Partnership to support the development and construction of new low-income senior rental housing located at 3869 State Street. The project is known as Grace Village Apartments. Grace Lutheran Church donated the land at 3869 State Street to the Housing Authority of the City of Santa Barbara for the express purpose of developing low-income senior housing. The project is designed as a three-story building with a total of 58 one-bedroom units, 57 of which will be low-income senior units, and one-bedroom unit will be a manager's The total project cost is estimated to be $16,371,589. Grace Village Apartments Limited Partnership is applying for tax credits in July, and if they are successful and are awarded tax credits, construction will begin in late 2015 and take approximately 14 months to complete the project. The low-income housing tax credit program, coupled with low—local affordable housing dollars, is essentially the only vehicle today for the development of affordable rental housing. Grace Village Apartments LP, as I mentioned earlier, will be applying for tax credits in July. These tax credits will provide over $8 million, or more than 50% of the total project cost, with a $1 million city investment. This represents a leverage ratio of eight to one. Council may want to consider taking advantage of this leveraged effect from tax credits by providing funding for similar affordable housing projects in the future. Under the current proposed ownership structure, which is typical for low-income tax credit applications, the Housing Authority will own the land and lease the land to Grace Village Apartments Limited Partnership. Grace Village Apartments will be the leaseholder of the land, and when the project's constructed, they will own the building. A similar ownership structure was used by the Housing Authority on several successful affordable housing projects, such as Bradley Studios and Artisan Court. The proposed city loan has a 30-year term, earning 3% interest rate. Repayments are due on a residual receipts basis, basically meaning that on an annual basis, we look at the financials of the project, we look at the gross rental income, subtract the operating expenses, add a little in for reserves, and if there's positive cash flow, then a payment is required. If there's any remaining principal at the end of 30 years, it's due and payable at that time. The 3% interest on the million-dollar city loan represents a potential of $30,000 of income per year to the city. If you take the million-dollar city loan and divide it into the 57 units, the subsidy cost per unit is only $17,241. The typical subsidy cost on a historical basis for the city per unit is about $120,000. And if this city loan is approved, it will significantly improve the chances of receiving tax credits on this project. If the city loan is approved, a 90-year covenant will be executed with an expiration date of 2105. If the tax credits are awarded, a 55-year tax regulatory agreement will be executed. The tax regulatory agreement has similar affordability restrictions to the city covenant, and the city covenant will be subordinated to the tax regulatory agreement. The city covenant will be secured by a leasehold. In the year 2011, the first baby boomers turned 65, and by the year 2030, we're going to have over 70 million seniors. Many of those seniors are on fixed income, low income, and will require affordable housing, such as the solution of Grace Village Apartments. Grace Village Apartments project also meets the city's consolidated plan and housing element priorities by providing low-income senior rental housing. The funding for the requested million-dollar loan will come from two accounts. The first $500,000 will come from the SEMP account, or the Socioeconomic Mitigation Program Fund account. In the 1980s and 1990s, the city received SEMP funds from oil developers to help mitigate the impact on low- and moderate-income housing supply due to the influx of South Coast oil extraction operations employees. The second $500,000 would come from the Successor Agency Housing Fund. Since the dissolution of the Redevelopment Agency, housing loan repayments have been used to support the city's affordable housing program, which includes administration, project development, and compliance monitoring of the city's affordable housing ownership and rental inventory. Repayments to the Successor Agency Housing Fund in excess of program cost are used to support future housing projects. However, the majority of these loan repayments are not guaranteed and vary considerably from year to year because repayments are based on a residual receipts method, where the payment is only required when there's positive cash flow. The use of successor agency funds resulted from a discussion at the June 23 Finance Committee meeting. Staff had recommended that the funding for Grace Village loan come from a combination of SEMP funds in the amount of $471,203, and unrestricted funds in the amount of $528,797. The unrestricted funds held in an affordable revolving loan fund are from repayments on affordable housing loans dating back to the early 1980s. In 1981 and 1982, the city provided general funds to three affordable projects, with the intent that repayments be utilized for future affordable projects. Two loans have been repaid, and one is still active. The Finance Committee recommended that city council approve the requested loan to Grace Village Limited Partnership with the request that an alternative source of funds be used. The Finance Committee also recommended that city council consider transferring $528,797 from the Affordable Housing Revolving Loan Fund to the General Fund. So the recommendations that you have in front of you are that city council approve a $1 million loan to Grace Village Apartments Limited Partnership to support the development and construction of new low-income senior rental project located at 3869 State Street. Authorize the appropriation of $500,000 in the revolving loan fund from the SEMP reserves to fund a future portion of the requested loan. Authorize the appropriation of $500,000 in Successor Agency Housing Fund from reserves to fund the portion of the requested loan. Authorize the Community Development Director to execute such agreements and related documents subject to approval as deformed by the city attorney as necessary. And finally, consider a recommendation from the Finance Committee to transfer $528,797 of unrestricted money in the revolving loan fund, which originated from the General Fund, back to the General Fund. This concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. I'd like to point out, we have three representatives from the Housing Authority of the City of Santa Barbara, if you'd like to ask them any questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? We do have a public comment speaker slip. Tom Widrow, come on up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. City Watch supports this particular project. I just wanted to draw a distinction between public-private partnerships for low-income housing versus some of our county's failed efforts at doing low-income housing purchased projects. If you remember, a number of years ago, a grand jury found that, for instance, in Summerland, where they built a number of those low-income units, which were—there was a lottery and people could purchase those, they found, I think it was almost two-thirds of the people who had bought those properties were in violation of the covenants. So this certainly stands apart as a good low-income project. I just wanted to draw a contrast between that and ones that don't work, where people are renting them out to their own benefit, or perhaps selling them at an inflated rate once they've gotten in on the lottery. So just to applaud the city council for distinguishing between good low-income projects and ones that maybe don't work so well. And then I just also want to say is that I think generally, we're up against things—a pretty tough situation here in Santa Barbara, where there really isn't anything—no such thing as affordable housing. As long as the Fed props up home sales and home prices with low interest rates, the prices are going to continue to skyrocket, and rents will continue at their 99% occupancy, and it's really something that—it's a little bit like Don Quixote charging at windmills on this one. So—but nonetheless, applaud you making specific support of this particular project. Thank you.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to ask a representative from the Housing Authority to make a statement about the project, if I may.
Mr. Samansky?
Madam Mayor, city council members, Skip Samansky with the Housing Authority, City of Santa Barbara. This project was brought to us several years ago, about eight years ago, from Grace Lutheran Church. We couldn't put a deal together then. They went out and they spoke with Front Porch, a nonprofit associated with the Lutheran Church. They had a hard time pulling it together, and ultimately came back to the Housing Authority to see if we could help get this through. I'm pleased to say that if this approval goes through today, we will be making our application to the tax credits—tax credit allocation committee tomorrow. The—I think the staff report is very clear. The individuals we intend to serve is a market that is just in high demand. Seniors in this income range are just growing. It's a large population of our homeless as well. Thank you.
Actually, while you're up there, just to—so, the tax credit equity, it's 8.6 whatever million. Is it an all-or-nothing bit, or is it possible that you might get tax credits for part of the request, but not the whole thing?
It's an all-or-nothing.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As staff pointed out at the Finance Committee, we were looking at the original staff suggestion on how to fund this, and realized that half of the money that was to be devoted to this project came from a fund that had originally been established with general fund money. And given the number of demands on the general fund and our recent decision to do everything we can to get back to reserve policy levels, we thought on the Finance Committee that it made sense to take that money out of the revolving fund that had originally been general fund money and bring it back into the general fund. So that's what Recommendation E is about.
Okay. So then, does that bring us back to full policy reserves in one year, as we've been talking about? Looks like it might.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, it certainly helps. You know, there's just a lot of moving pieces, but yes, that's a pretty substantial chunk and gets you very close, and I think it's possible you will be in one year at full policy reserves.
Okay. That's good. Ms. Mario?
And Madam Mayor, just if someone makes a motion to that effect, if your intent is to dedicate those funds when they return to the general fund to go to general fund reserves, I'd recommend that you just clarify that in the motion.
Okay. Ms. Mario?
Well, Mr. Casey, does that mean that we're not going to be using those funds anymore for affordable housing projects?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Mario, correct. That's the policy question in front of you today, is to remove it from the Affordable Housing Revolving Fund and putting it back into general fund reserves.
And there's no other way to—I mean, that's a big lot of opportunity that we're losing for affordable housing. Is someone on the Finance Committee prepared to just explain why? You would take money away from an affordable housing pot of money, and how long has it been like that, Mr. Casey? Many years?
Yeah, the original loans were made in the early 1980s, and then they've been being repaid back over time. And so it's been in the affordable housing pool since the early 1980s.
And thank you. Forgive me for not watching the Finance Committee meeting on this particular item.
I don't blame you. The—the concept of—I mean, this is a very common concept of using a revolving fund for loans for this sort of thing, and if it were—we have a lot of money that's dedicated just to affordable housing that we can't use for any other purpose. And I believe, Mr. Casey, isn't it true that this money came out of the general fund at a time when there wasn't RDA money for affordable housing?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Francisco, it was in the very early stages of the Redevelopment Agency, so it wasn't generating much—
Exactly. So I can understand the council having made that decision at that time, but given all the constraints that we have on the general fund right now, it just makes—it made sense to me, it made sense to the rest of the Finance Committee, that if we're going to meet this goal of getting back to policy reserves and then looking at our possibilities, it makes sense to do it now.
So if there were changes in the future, Mr. Casey, we could reverse that decision? If we make that today?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, yes, the council could, in a future date, put general fund money back into affordable housing projects.
Thank you.
Is there any other future affordable housing projects that you can see might need loans in the very near future?
Madam Mayor, there's—given the shortage of funds in affordable housing, we've, up to this date, been able to satisfy all the requests. However, the People Self-Help Project on the corner of Salas Apuitis and Haley, even though we've supplied $3.4 million of funding over the years, they've been unable— though we've supplied $3.4 million of funding over the years, they've been unable to win tax credits for that project. If we did have an additional $1 million, they would win tax credits and could build the project. So that's one project that is in need of additional funding.
Right, but, so they're not going to apply this year? They would apply the earliest a year from now?
They're actually applying for July.
Oh, they are?
But they're pretty much convinced they're not going to be awarded tax credits. And those are what's called 9% tax credits. There's another type of tax credits, 4% tax credits, that are non-competitive, and their plan is to apply for those in September, because we have a deadline on some of the funds that we use to spend it, some of the home funds.
Okay. And that's the only other pending project out there that you know of currently?
There's other projects that have made requests of funds for rehabilitation with CDBG funds and SEMP funds that we've not been able to fund. And those are existing affordable projects that we're trying to extend the useful life of that project in need of repairs. No new projects at this point.
Okay. You know, I'm fine with the recommendation today, but I do want to keep this conversation in mind because I don't think we still have a long-term plan of what to do post-RDA funding opportunities for affordable housing, and I think we need to figure that out. And it may be that in a year from now or two years from now, we may come back and need some General Fund money to restart up a loan, but since there's nothing imminent now, it seems like People Self Help Housing is going to try the next two rounds and they might come up with a proposal in a year or two or something, then we can revisit it at that point. At least this gives this project the pieces that they need. So, and as you said, Mr. Francisco, with the idea of moving to full policy reserves, let's get there and then resurface it. But I do think that is a future conversation for the Council of what is the role of the city post-RDA about affordable housing funding, which we should have someday. Okay. So, great. Well, thank you for having that conversation at the Finance Committee. Any other questions or is there a motion?
Mr. Casey, one question about Recommendation E. How would we need to proceed on that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Francisco, I think you can recommend, approval of Recommendation E, that you transferred the monies to the General Fund and dedicate it towards the General Fund Reserve. And then Mr. Samansky and Finance Staff will be able to make that accounting.
Okay. Well, in that case, I would move A through E with that understanding of E.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any other questions on the motion?
Madam Mayor, I just would like to state that I don't want to hold up this project either, but I concur with you about this has been already a response to the loss of RDA money. And we will, we really do need to revisit it in the new year. Thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. That's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you. Good luck with the application. Okay, item 28.
Increase in construction change order authority for the recycled water treatment plant replacement project.
Okay.
Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, my name's Linda Samansky. I'm a principal engineer in the Public Works Engineering Division. We're here today to give you an update on the progress for the recycled water treatment plant replacement project. As you may be aware, the designer for the project has acknowledged making an error in the specifications for the project. And we are now at a place where it's created some significant complications that are actually affecting the completion and the costs of the project. So we're working very closely with the contractor and the designer to move the project forward. So what I'm going to cover very briefly for you today is a history of how we got to where we are, where we are and what we're looking at for today, and what our expectations for the project are. I do want to point out that we did not put together a PowerPoint for this project because it's very fluid and it's been very difficult to keep it updated. So we figured we would give you a verbal and then answer any questions that you might have. So as you know, the city's recycled water plant was built in 1989. It was one of the first in the state of California, and it's been in operations, obviously, for over 20 years. And during that time, it's reached the end of some of its useful life. It also was not able to keep up with some new regulations that have come out. So in January of 2012, we awarded an assessment and preliminary design contract to Camp Dresser McGee &amp; Smith. They actually put together an assessment of a number of technologies, including replacing what we had, which is basically a conventional water treatment type of plant, and several other technologies. From that assessment, we decided to move forward with a microfiltration and ultrafiltration type of plant. Final design for that project was granted in February of 2013 and was put out to bid, and a contract was awarded in June of, I'm sorry, in April of 2014. The contracts were executed and the project was given a notice to proceed in June of 2014. At that time, the construction contract was for 252 days, which would have put our completion date at June, June 16, 2015. So in May, as we were going through the project, it became obvious to us that we were not going to receive the membranes in time for the project. We began to investigate some other alternatives for securing membranes that may have been able to help us keep our schedule. At that point in time, we discovered that there was an error in the specifications for the water quality that would be the feed to the new plant. The water quality that we currently have is significantly poorer than what was in the specifications. Because it's significantly poorer, the membranes that were specified for the project will not be able to perform their duty and will not be able to process recycled water that will meet specifications. Since that time, we've been working with Shock Contracting, who is the contractor for the project, and with CDM Smith, who was the designer of the project, to figure out the most efficient and appropriate way to replace the membranes and to get this done in the most timely, and most affordable manner. To date, we have identified the membranes. We will be changing the membranes from the original specified membranes. The ones that we are going to be using are a little more friendly towards the poorer quality water. We have identified about two-thirds of the number that we need in the U.S. The remainder are actually in China at the moment and will be airfreighted over for our project. What will happen with the membrane costs is that we will pay a restocking fee for the original membranes, and we will also have to pay for some additional membranes. And the way that works is that the original membranes were made to be more compact. If you think about the way they're put together, it's like a bunch of spaghetti strings inside of a tube. And the original membranes were very compact. They couldn't actually handle the higher solids that we have in our project. The way the newer membranes, they're not quite as packed. There's a little more space for those solids to make it through the membranes. So we actually have to order more membranes. The way this project was set up, it's called a universal skid. So you install these membranes on this skid, which basically brings the water to the membranes for processing. It is set up so that you can change out membranes. So the fact that we need to add more is not a problem. We do have the space to do that. The other thing that we have identified that needs to happen at this point in time is the connections that go from this skid to the membranes need to be altered. The actual size of the membranes are different. The older ones that we are not going to be using are longer. They're approximately 85 inches or so. The new ones are about a little over 70 inches. So we need to adjust the connections to get to those membranes. We are working on the costs for that with the contractor. We have identified the new fittings. We are working with the contractor's vendor, who will manufacture those new fittings for us. They've actually given us a timeframe at this point of 30 to 40 days to manufacture those. And keep in mind that they are making 176 of these connections to go to our membranes. That's how many we will have in our skids. Based on our project updates, with basically the fitting timing being the driving force at this point in time, we're looking to a project startup date of mid to late October. So as I said, staff has been working closely with the designer regarding the error in the specifications. We've worked with them on some of the preliminary costs that we've seen so far to date. At this point in time, when we discovered this error, we were approximately 80% done with the project, and we had used a substantial portion of the change order for other unforeseen circumstances on the project. So at this point in time, we're actually asking Council to, we were recommending to Council that we increase the change order authority and replace it so that we can move forward with getting all of the membranes and fittings and other items that need to be paid for done without exceeding our current authority. And that's really all I have for you right now. I'm happy to take any questions from you.
So assuming all happens the way now that you want, when do you think the plant will be online and producing recycled water?
We hope to have startup in mid to late October, so we should be producing water at that time. We won't actually be finished with the contract. There actually is a very long period for testing and operations and maintenance attached with the contract, but we would be producing water for the system.
Okay. Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Could you explain in a little more detail exactly what the nature of the design error was and who's responsible for it?
Sure. The design error, basically what was in the specifications for the feed quality to the process itself was different than what our current feed quality is. And back when this project was initially thought about, we were also thinking about doing the secondary effluent project at the wastewater treatment plant. So what we had explained to the designer was that for a period of time, we would probably need to run this process with the poorer quality water until we had made our upgrades to the secondary process, and then we would actually have a better quality water. I don't know that we've actually identified what the water quality that was put in the specification goes with, but it is much poorer than what we have right now that would feed the recycled facility.
So we gave the designer the wrong spec for the input, or what happened?
I don't know that we understand exactly how those numbers made it into the specifications. It is the responsibility of the designer, as the expert in the matter, to be, they are responsible for the specifications.
And if I might interject, we're clearly looking at dispute resolution and insurance claims. So perhaps the best thing for us to do is when we do have all the facts, we could report confidentially to the City Council.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, Rebecca Bjork, Public Works Director, I just want to step back one step in terms of setting up how the project was designed and bid. Ms. Samansky made reference to a number of projects, well, two projects at the wastewater plant, the first to do with the recycled water, another project that we're actively pursuing now to improve the treated, the quality of the water prior to getting to the recycled water plant. We were doing this a little bit backwards. Normally, we would have waited for that wastewater, the second wastewater project to be done before we'd move forward with the recycled water project. We didn't do that in this case because we needed to get that recycled water project done, and we understood that. The design consultant was very well aware of the fact that we were giving them the current recycled water quality. It was a very important part of the preliminary design process. It was an important part of the decision-making process, and it was an important part of the selection of the specified technology. So isn't it an issue of misinformation from city staff to the design consultant? The design consultant used the wrong information in their specifications.
Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, Mr. Cullen, if I understand you, we think we have a chance of recovering whatever we have to spend extra here.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Hart.
And that cost recovery effort is going to include the long-term additional cost? If we're having more membranes and we're having a different connection system, there will be different maintenance long-term. Although it does sound as though perhaps when the second project is completed, that we'll go back to something that would have worked with the originally conceived design. Or just make sure you're thinking about all those costs, not just the immediate costs, but the long-term lifecycle costs that are additional for this.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, yes, we are putting together all of the items that we believe would be part of a potential claim.
Okay. So for now, we want to get this thing working, and so we do have a recommendation in front of us. I don't see any speaker slips on this item, so is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Move the staff recommendation?
Okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay. Any Council Committee assignment reports?
Well, I...
Ms. Mario.
Thank you. I was going to mention during the conversation about the Cabrillo Bath House that we were there yesterday for a meeting of the South Coast Task Force on Youth Gangs, and it's a new initiative called My Brothers Keeper. And right away, people said, "What about My Sisters Keeper?" So I think they're going to make some gender balance on the name. The bath house is beautiful. Thank goodness, we're fixing it up. But it's a great program on keeping our gang activity down, which is the process. And the focus is on youth employment and reducing violent crime. And I've done some other things, but I don't want to take up the time today. Thank you.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one piece that I believe is kicking in next month, which comes here tomorrow, and that is our water rates do go up the next round of increases. And so those folks out there that use more than 16 units of water, just watch out, be careful, conserve more. That's the level where the spike in price is going to occur, and hopefully it will translate into yet more conservation.
Just to say, yesterday I had the opportunity to be at a ceremonial event at the San Marcan Retirement Community. They just created this archival history, historical center on the property of the facility, which is 100 years old this month. When it was first put together, it's been a hotel, it's been a number of different things, and it's actually a very nicely-done exhibit, a permanent exhibit. And so for visitors who, so when we go there, if you're there for that Fiesta Monday, as we normally go to, to the San Marcan area, make sure you stop by and, nice ceremony from the retirement community there. So, anything else? Okay, we do have a closed session. If you could read that.
Conference with city attorney regarding pending litigation entitled Justin Williams versus the City of Santa Barbara. WCAB case numbers ADJ 8592814, ADJ 8729223, and ADJ 9464749.
Okay. And due to the Independence Day holiday, we do not have a meeting next week, so we'll see you in two weeks. We will adjourn from the closed session. Thank you.
You need a laugh or two. A certain place I know Frankie, where funny people can have fun.